Okay, we're all set.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. As a reminder, this hearing, this meeting is being conducted under the offices of Governor Cuomo's Executive Order 202.1, last extended as 202.68, which allows public officers' meetings to be held remotely. May I first confirm that each board member is alone and not under any duress to vote any particular way? Let me start with my virtual left, Ms. Weiser.
I'm alone.
Ms. Wasser.
I am alone.
Ms. Denapoli.
I'm alone.
Mr. Pickett.
I am alone.
Vice Chair Dexter.
I am alone.
And Mr. Oliver.
I am alone.
Thank you very much. Please join me as we re-pledge our fealty to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing. This is for Hyde Park Town Center, Park Plaza. The applicants have proposed a, what we consider to be a really wonderful exterior renovation of the existing main building. This would be for where everyone would know as the location of CVS, as well as the Antonella's Restaurant, amongst other many fine businesses. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Chris Oliver.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands if you'd like saying aye. Aye. Any extensions or den- any nays? They're being on motion carries. I don't believe that anyone signed up to speak about this from the public. No matter, I can confirm that no one spoke, signed up to speak about this to public. So.
That is correct.
Do we have any comments from our consultants or the board?
We received a letter from Ms. Lible explaining that Phase One is limited to the architectural features only. And that's now part of the application.
Correct. So we have an entire site plan, but because the site plan, well, let me go back to put some words back in my mouth. So when this was first proposed to us about a year ago for the architectural changes, that's all it was, was architecture changes. In the interim, Williams left, another one of their anchor tenants decided to expand, which is always great to see a business expand in our community. It's taking over the Williams space. They now have another tenant taking over where Mid Hudson Regionals early learning center has been. So they've changed traffic flow. There's been a few other major changes. So in order to allow, we hope, the applicant to be able to pull the building permit to get started on the exterior change only, we bifurcated, so to speak, the process or the review, so that we can just take a look at the architecture only. And we already had that workshop many times, and it, I believe, is to the satisfaction of everyone. So there's no other comment. Make it a motion to close the public hearing with the proviso that we will allow written comment to be received for 10 more days.
So moved, Chris Oliver.
Second, Ann Weiser.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Any nays or extensions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And we'll be, we'll put this on the agenda. Yes, Tad? Sorry.
I think, I'm not sure what Liz was going to say, but is the seven day instead of 10 day for comment applicable?
We, this one was noticed with 10 days.
Okay.
So that will be the policy for new applications that haven't been noticed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, did you have a question or a comment?
Um, well, um, I did start to look at a seminal just provided. And there's only one item that I did want to try to get some feedback on. If I can find amended site plan. Here we go. Okay, I can't. Um, I don't know if anybody's seen the new site plan. One of the issues has to do with having planter islands in the middle of the parking lot. And what has been shown are a couple of six-foot square planters, kind of, I guess I would say diagonally oriented or in the middle of a parking area with a single tree in it. I'm, that wasn't what I had in mind when I was looking for a parking island. However, the plans do show.
Liz, when, I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm so sorry. This is Kelly, the applicant. So Kelly Lible. I think the only application that's on for tonight for the subject of the discussion, and Mr. Chairman, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, is just the Phase One part, which is the
Correct.
the exterior elevations. And that was, we had broken the application into two parts. We did, for the board's privilege, we did, sorry, here I am. We did submit this morning for the Phase Two portion of the project, which includes the site plan and the work inside of Williams Lumber. And I think that's what Liz is talking about, is some of the changes that we made to the exterior. So I'm happy to talk about it, if you want to hear it. But I think the public hearing was just for Phase One.
And if the board doesn't want to discuss that tonight, that's fine.
I haven't even had a chance to look at the plans. I would, my day was slammed all day. So I'd rather wait until we have, I'll have an opportunity to look at them. But just for the record, Diamonds with Trees is allowed under the code as opposed to so much of a parking island. I'll find that section before we meet and discuss this. Thank you, Kelly. I'm sorry. I was sort of daydreaming there, listening and not thinking about where we were.
Okay.
So the next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is for Hyde Park Town Center North, where the immediately adjacent parcel, where we have Emergency One, Domino's, and some other, and of course Monroe Muffler, the building that sort of set it off. The, this application is for an extension of time in which to start, well, excuse me, conclude substantial construction. There's one building left to be refaced that was part of the original approval. Make it a motion to reopen this public hearing.
So moved, Stephanie Wasser.
You're a second.
I, this Brent Pickett, I'll second it. I think I've got a set here that shows, I think, Chris and I are mixed up on seconds, but.
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 So if we recall, what was holding this up was the removal of graffiti, or at least covering, effacing of graffiti, as well as painting some plywood. Both were done. Thank you, Kelly. Thank the, thank the owners. So that was the only impediment. Virtual class.
Yeah, sorry that took so long.
No, no, those are the only impediments to moving forward. Again, no one signed up to comment on this. And for the record, we haven't had any comments so far in this public hearing. Any comments from the consultants or board members?
No.
Tad?
I believe you referred to Monroe, and it should be Mavis.
Mavis. Sorry, sorry, thank you. To the Ms., Mavis, yes. Monroe would be down the street. Sorry. Thank you, Tad, for correcting me. Anything else? Make it a motion to close the public hearing. There being no other, another comment.
I'll make the motion, Brent Pickett.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or extensions? That motion carries as well. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Certainly. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is a workshop. This is, we have, so let me start over again. This involves Belvedere, which is a country inn located at the very northern portion of our community on Route Nine. We had had, the new owner has gone through several iterations of the plans. As, so because there were some unapproved changes that were made, those have now come into conformance. In the meantime, some lighting was added and some changes made to ponds. So we asked the applicant to come back and codify this so it could be reviewed and therefore approved tonight. They did. Mr. Temple Smith, who's here tonight representing the applicant, also had added, or was requested to add, parking that would have had subsurface structure to it. Tad determined that that would be considered part of scale, even though it's not permanent parking, because scale is meant to identify overall use. Even though this would be occasional, it would be definitely part of the use. So the, Mr. Smith went back to the applicant or the owner and discussed it. And because that would inhibit his ability to expand with other buildings in the future, should he want to, they dropped the parking. So Mr. Smith has revised the plans and submitted them. They were submitted relatively recently, but because this was already in process, we've reviewed this project many years now. I decided that it should be getting up as soon as possible, so we could refer it down to county planning, because that really is the only referral we would make for this kind of site management. Warren, I just spoke a lot. Let me let you add anything you'd like to.
Thank you, Michael. One thing I would say, when we were last before the board, with the plan that included the proposals for parking for events on reinforced soil, that was before our lives were changed by the COVID pandemic. And so, like many hospitality venues, very little has been going on at Belvedere. There's been no lodging and no dining. And right now, there's no regular staff on premises. So as the owners have reviewed their use of the property going forward, they've decided that there's no near-term need for large areas of parking. So essentially, the, the proposed amended site plan before you has totally removed any realignment of the entry drive, any additional parking. In fact, the, the only proposed changes involve some screening along the south property line between the Belvedere site and the, the houses immediately to the south, which is a bamboo screen. You did see that previously. And the only change to that is the proposal to interweave a more secure light barrier, which you'll, which you'll see in the drawings. So, so that is that landscaping change is the only landscaping change proposed. And the other change relates to site lighting that was added there to highlight aspects of the site, really ambient lighting, as opposed to lighting for security or, or, you know, any other purpose. And I believe that, that many, if not all of you, had a chance to see that on the site earlier this year. I think it was earlier this year. So that the lighting drawings have been revised to show only that lighting, no additional lighting proposed, and to both enlarge and clarify some of the schedules that were attached that were difficult to read at the time, something that your consultant had noted, and that was quite correct. So if you'd like, I have this on my desktop and I can share it with you. But I believe you've all seen either PDFs and/or hard copies of the drawings. And as this isn't a public hearing, you may not need me to walk you through it. But if you'd like me to, I'd be happy to take control of the screen and show you the drawing.
Board members, would you like to see more on the screen now? Or have you had enough time to read everything? Everyone's muted, sorry.
I don't, I don't mind seeing, especially from Warren's perspective.
Okay. Does that seem agreeable? Okay. And Warren, thank you for clarifying. You're right. There, there are other reasons why you don't need this right now. We don't seem to be seeing large gatherings in the, anytime in the near future. So you're correct.
Right. So let me see if I can successfully share a screen here. Window or application? Okay, it doesn't seem to letting me share my screen, which is what I want to do. Pushing screen.
You're authorized, so.
Yeah. Let me, let me try to minimize all this and see if I can at least open what I want to show you. Whoops. Okay. Actually, whoops. Hang on. Not working well. Where are we? So I'm not seeing the documents. And I'm wondering if, in fact, I don't have them. I thought I put them on a flasher. I haven't put them on this computer. So I don't know if there's anything else you can do while I quickly move them onto this computer. Assuming it lets me share it anyway.
Tad, do you have any comments in advance of the presentation? But I think you had some questions about the lighting.
Well.
Now that Warren's not there, it won't really do much good. Hmm.
What we can do is procedurally, if you want to take up the resolution while we're waiting, it's a procedural resolution to classify the action and refer it to county planning.
We were unable to do this before because we didn't have, this is the first time we've had a response to our comments that were, I believe, back in April. There we go.
Do you want, Michael, do you want me to read the resolution?
I was gonna say, all this does is this allows us to type the action because it's lighting, there's no real construction. And it refers to the county planning, so we can get the process started for them to reply. So please do.
Resolution to classify the action and referring the site plan and special use permit amendment to Dutchess County Planning and Development, the Belvedere Inn, Resolution 16-29D, whereas seven times, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under speaker, two, declares itself lead agency, as there are no other involved agencies, and three, directs its secretary to refer the amended site plan to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
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 Any nays or extensions? The motion carries unanimously. Warren is back. Let's see if he can work some magic this time.
Let's see if we can open this up. Okay.
If not, Warren, I have it.
And I have it up on my screen already, in case anybody needs it.
Okay. I, I can't tell if, if anyone can see what's on my screen at this point or not.
Nope.
Not yet.
No, no. Go back to zoom.
Why don't we have Liz share it? You have it open.
I think Warren wants to be able to do pointers, et cetera, on it. That's why he's trying on his.
Not sure why.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to point or, you know, I share. If I share, can't Warren, you know.
He can.
Yes, of course. Right.
They annotate.
Okay. Fine. Let me see if I can get back to where all of you are. Not sure why. Reason I can't make this large. I'm not sure what the problem is. It's not working.
All right, well.
I can see you, but I don't seem to be able to.
Victoria has it up.
So Warren, if you want, you can annotate by going to the top.
For some reason, this is minimized, and I don't seem to be able to, oh, here we go. Okay, a little better.
Tell me where you want to start.
Oh, well, the cover sheet you have up there, right? Okay, so this is just, again, it shows more up-to-date photos of the buildings than we had a few years ago, because there've been some changes. And it has updated a table at the top of coverage, which indicates, again, there are no changes to the parking or driveways, or really any other building coverage since the last, the approved submission 2016. And then I think there was an extension granted in 2018, as I recall. So there really is no update to that table, since we're not proposing to cover any more of the site. So that just sort of covers that, that part of it. If we want to go to the, the next, the next page, that is the site plan joint effort by LRC Group, which shows, again, the existing buildings, shows the parking as it, as it was approved and as it is today. The drive aisle is the same. And I think the changes to the pond were documented previously, or nothing's been done since the last presentation to this board back in early of 2020. So there are no new aspects to the site plan there. That is, again, what exists today. If you want to go down to the next page, please, which is the landscape plan, and there are a few landscape details on it. So that shows along the, the south property line, again, it's sort of bolded the proposed bamboo screen, two, two thicknesses or two rows, I suppose, of a non-invasive species of bamboo. And yet, even with that, precautions are taken to prevent the root system from spreading beyond where it's intended. So it runs across from sort of south of the mansion and, and the building referred to as the carriage house. There's a cut for a driveway into the neighbor's property, not sort of the official drive aisle, but, but a driveway that was put in at some point, which the owners have decided to leave there as a gesture of goodwill toward the neighbors. A little further to the east, there's the primary driveway through to the residences to the south. And then the bamboo turns and follows the jog in the property line, continues slightly south, and then further east along the boundary. So basically, all of the buildings on the Belvedere site are sort of screened in terms of direct view from the, the neighbors to the south. And there's a tail on the upper right-hand corner of that drawing that shows, again, sort of schematic of the bamboo, a couple of rows, and the proposed screen that would weave through it to provide a more effective visual barrier than simply the bamboo by itself. I mean, bamboo is something that doesn't lose its leaves in the winter. But it's, it's not as dense as some coniferous, some evergreen-type trees. And it's, it forms a pretty quick growing screen and a fairly dense screen. But it, it seems to be an effective way to get a visual barrier that would benefit both the Belvedere site and the neighbors to the south. Of course, the neighbors will have a chance to comment on that if you have a public hearing. But that, that is the intent of this, just to provide a little more privacy for both sides. So that's the only landscape or landscape material planned, proposed, a change proposed at this point. And the following sheet documents the lighting, which again, is the lighting that many planning board members saw illuminated after dark earlier this year. And that, they're sort of keys on there to the various fixtures. And so the other documents that were submitted that aren't here to go up on the screen, there's, there's a book of lighting details, a couple of tables, reference things with, with the, you know, specific information on the lighting. Again, I think, more graphically clear and easier to digest by your consultants than the, than the submission earlier this year. So essentially, no lighting beyond what is already installed at the site and what, what you've had a chance, at least one chance to see. The site is being proposed, and the only other change is the bamboo screen along the south property line.
Thank you, Warren.
Yeah.
Just a couple of, before I turn it over to the consultants, I had a one quick question. Do you know anything about the state of the front lawn? Why it's kind of looking weedy like that? Is that something that's being done deliberately? Or you may not know.
No, I, I think it's overdue to be mowed. That was pointed out actually to owners within the last week or so. I expect that to be remedied.
Okay. I mean, if it's, it's obviously a site not being used, so.
Right.
But it's, it's, it went from looking sort of like a Scottish golf course to a mess, really quickly.
That, that observation has been shared, and it should not look like it's abandoned. I totally agree.
Thank you. Let me start with Ms. Axelson's comments.
Um, yeah, I, I noted, of course, that we don't have all the parking proposed as before. It's, it's back to 76 spaces instead of 156. And the landscaping is just on the south, nothing on the north. And I did, of course, note that the number of light fixtures is considerably less. So I'll confer with Michael about what, if any, review would be needed. I just looked at this as a sketch. The, the one thing that I was confused about on the site plan sheet, SP1.
Yes.
There's a dashed line that is the driveway. But it's not. It's, it's consistent, it's more consistent with the changed driveway location from before, when there was to be parking on either side. And so that was a little confusing, because I thought the existing parking just went straight along. And there was a planter with lighting that used to be on the side of the existing driveway. So that.
At the entrance, Liz?
Um. If I can show you my, if it's possible to show my screen, I can show. Got a second here. This. Okay, I'm just gonna show. I don't know what happened to everybody, but.
We're here. We're just to the side.
Okay. Fine. Can you see my screen? Yes. Okay. So what I'm trying to show is that the driveway used to go straight through the existing driveway.
Right.
And then when there was going to be parking reconfigured, the proposed driveway was going to go around here.
Right.
And it was going to be parking. And then, and there was also an island over here. So if I, hang on just a second. I can show you the existing configuration from the older plan set.
Yes.
Where the driveway goes straight through, and there's this planter with lighting.
Yes.
Fixtures on it. So that was the only thing that puzzled me, is it looks like there's still a proposed change in the driveway.
That's an excellent question. That, that dotted line was a driveway change that the, the owners were considering proposing and requesting. That has changed, so that should have been removed. And thank you for pointing that out. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get that removed.
Okay. And that was it. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a pretty simple plan. So I'll confer with Michael and Tad about whether there's any need for me to do review, like to actually write a memo. We can figure that out.
We'll discuss, but most importantly, if you heard, listed a side-by-side comparison for the lighting. What we first saw had, we'll call it a wish list, so more lights than what were installed at the meeting, or at the site visit that we attended, which was back when it was, well, almost like this weather, except it was colder. We noted, those of us out there, that the ambient lighting that existed seemed okay and not obtrusive. We just asked if they not put any more, so that has been attended to so far from what Liz noted.
And I can just, I mean, quickly show the board.
Yeah.
This is, if you can see, this is what was proposed last time for lighting. And this is the current proposed lighting plan. So if you kind of, I'm going to go back to the older one. Lighting all over. And this one, a much more demure proposal of lighting. So.
Excellent choice of words. Excellent choice of words as well. Demure, quiet, unobtrusive. Ms. Pal, oh, any comments, Ms. Paldaro?
No.
Ms. Moss?
There were a couple of things. If you're going to put in a barrier for the bamboo, I'm, to make it effective, I think it needs to encompass the root zone for the, in the length, the entire length, and then obviously break it for the driveway, but surround each segment line and use a detail as to how you are going to connect the pieces of barrier, because that's quite long. I don't think it'll be just one piece. Otherwise, I really don't think it will do much of anything.
Okay.
I would like the board to consider the corrugated metal screen fence. I know that it will be hidden primarily by the bamboo, but it looks an awful lot like the side of a shipping container.
It's actually not metal. I think it's, one of the tales referred to is asphalt, but it's a composite material. I mean, it doesn't necessarily affect the way it looks, but the point is, it's, it's meant to be hidden by the bamboo on both sides to provide a, you know, barrier for headlights. But, but just for what it's worth, it's not actually metal.
Okay. And then on the lighting proposal, in the package that I looked at, there were like a, like a 12 or 15-foot diameter circles suspended from multiple trees. suspended from multiple trees that hung over gathering areas with lights every six inches along that ring. I'm not sure that that's, I don't think that was on the other plan. It may have been, but I don't remember it. And I'd just like the board to look at that and make sure they're comfortable with it.
I, I think it was in there before, but I'll have to go back and check. And, and if, granted, if the board has a problem with it, we can omit it.
And the other thing, I didn't find a photometric plan.
Yeah, these are, these are very low-intensity lights, and I, I don't know that we're going to be able to generate much of a photometric plan, but I will ask.
I just want to point out that because these are uplights, we typically in a photometric plan see foot candles, so how far it casts dimensionally on the ground. But these don't go on the ground. These mostly go up.
The ones on the rings are pointed downward.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Tad?
No, that's fine.
From the board, let me start. Ms. DeNapoli, any comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, I would like to second what Ms. Moss said about the detail on the, the root barrier for the, the bamboo. Even though it is a non-invasive species, they still manage to get out of control, so I'd like to see the detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I agree. Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm happy to see the plan back before us and reflecting some of the, the current realities, and very happy that you're, that you're still trying to move it forward. So I like the less intense use at this point, and you know, it's a beautiful site.
Thank you, Ann. I agree with you as well. Stephanie, Ms. Wasser?
No further comments at this time.
Mr. Pickett?
They've uncovered, no comments now. Thank you.
And Ms. Weiser?
My only comment is I do, I did like the, those sort of intimate hanging lamps, hanging lights from the trees. It looked like it, those looked charming, so.
I think the intent, of course, is to create a sort of romantic, fun atmosphere in the back for when such time as hospitality can start taking, start procuring again. I want to also echo what has been said earlier, Warren. We appreciate the owner moving forward with this during this uncertain time, and it is a beautiful site. I will go on record as saying that I, myself, do not like the color of the columns, but that's already been done, and I've sort of reconciled my, as soon as I saw that there were custom awnings over some of the windows and they matched, I realized then that that was a deliberate design, design decision. It wouldn't be mine, but it's, it's not garish, or really horrendous-looking. In that sense, it's just, it's sort of an odd job to me. At any rate, I would also like to see if we can get any photometric analysis of the ring lights, if that's possible. But otherwise, I'm certainly comfortable moving forward. And I believe that, since we have referred this by resolution now to county planning, that it's also appropriate for us to set a public hearing, but we'll wait till the November 18th, because that's going to give county planning time to have responded. So making a motion to set the public hearing?
So move Diane to now.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ann. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any nays or abstentions? There being none. Warren, we'll look to see, I, it's funny, when we do the screen share, I can't see everyone. So Warren, anything else from you?
No, I think you, your comments were very helpful. I've made note of everything. I agree.
Terrific. So we'll see you on the 18th, and we may, if you did anything in advance, let me know. Yes, Liz?
So, um, I know that we're workshopping this, and I know I had prior comments on a larger-scope proposal, and my suggestion would be, and I know that your letter said we didn't do a response memo, if it would be possible to do a response to the lighting and landscaping ones, then at least we'll have that covered.
Sure.
On record. That's a great idea. Thank you, Liz. Anything else? So Warren, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
I feel stupid saying this, but I always say it for holidays, so have a happy Halloween if you celebrate. I'm a little old, I admit.
Never too old for Halloween.
Oh, I think you are. The next item on the agenda is Duchess County Bocie's Lot Consolidation. Mr. Wells is here to represent the applicant, but in essence, this is a very simple review. There's, has four lots being consolidated into one lot. We had time for people to speak. We never heard from anyone. And this is really a simple combination of lots, so that they don't have to form a transportation corporation for their sewer lines. We closed the public hearing beforehand. We waited 10 days. We did not receive any additional comment. So unless someone else has something to say, I think we're ready with this resolution. I believe it'll be introduced by Mr. Pickett.
Got it. Resolution to improve a minor subdivision plat Bocie's, October 21st, 2020, resolution 2020-12A. Whereas, 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 now therefore, be resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the subdivision plat and authorizes the chairperson or his authorized designate to sign the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, Department of Behavioral and Community Health permission to file. And three, approval by the attorney to the planning board of a consolidation deed combining the four lots into one, and undertaking from the applicant's attorney that the approved consolidation deed will be recorded with the subdivision plat.
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Further discussion? Just a quick note, Ms. Paladaro did confer with the applicant's attorney today about condition three, and everything seems to have been worked out. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye or yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wells. Nice working with you. Have it briefly. The next item on the agenda is another approval resolution. This is for Verizon Cell Tower located at 113 South Quaker Lane. This was subject to lots of review and multiple open public hearings. We closed the public hearing last time with the proviso of allowing written comments to come in within 10 days. We did receive a written comment. The comment was a question, more than a comment, from a resident asking whether that we could require Verizon to lay ground, lay the lines to extend FiOS throughout the community. So since this is the first opportunity I've had to respond to that, the answer is, is that the law indicates, the law demands that there be a nexus or connection between what the applicant proposes and what we might request of them. In this instance, Verizon Wireless is actually partly owned by Verizon and FiOS, but they're separate divisions. They don't really have anything to do with one another, and just as an aside, many years ago, under different administration supervisor Delafield, back then, Verizon had indicated an interest in laying fiber optic cable to head up into Hyde Park. And then they sent a letter afterwards saying that they decided that it was not economically feasible. At the time, they were going to, I believe, start going up Creek Road from Poughkeepsie, but they never went. Subsequent to that, there have been rumors over the years that somehow the town is stopping FiOS from coming in, but I wanted to show everyone, that isn't the case. If FiOS wanted to come in, I think it'd be great, and I think most of our elected officials would as well, because we'd be in competition for our one cable provider. But if Verizon doesn't see a way to make it profitable, then they're not going to come in. So as far as I know, they're not doing a lot of laying out of stuff anyways. We go more and more wireless, speaking of. This will also, the tower that we received, the other comments we received, two comments were concerned radiation, which the federal government and the FCC have more or less preempted planning board review. But just to assure everyone, at the height this proposed tower is, 179 feet, there won't be any danger of radiation. And we had one comment letter praising the idea of having it there, because I believe he, the gentleman who wrote it must live in that neighborhood, Greenfields, but noting that there is currently, everyone has to have landlines, that you can't get reliable cellphone service. And particularly in this day and time, when so many families are having to do remote working and remote learning for their children, I can see why people would want to have a cellphone tower to provide better service through their phones, et cetera, on here. So any comments from our consultants before we read the resolution? Comments from the board? Okay, I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Wasser.
It is, and it's lengthy, so settle in. So, resolution to grant site plan and special use permit approval of Verizon Cell Tower, 113 South Quaker Lane, October 21st, 2020, resolution number 2020-03B. And we're going to start out with whereas times 12 clauses and go down to the bold. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby makes the following findings pursuant to Section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. One, the project will not result in excessive off-premises noise, dust, odors, solid waste, or glare, or create any public or private nuisances. The project involves the installation of telecommunications equipment on a new lattice tower and approximately the center of a 34-acre parcel. The tower will not be lit at night, and facility lights will only be used when there is a person at the facility during evening hours. There will be no off-premises noise, dust, solid waste, or glare. Two, the project will not cause significant traffic congestion, impair pedestrian safety, or overload existing roads. The facility will be unmanned, and after construction will generate only one to three additional vehicle trips per year for routine maintenance. Three, the project is suitable, given that the property's size, location, topography, vegetation, soils, natural habitat, hydrology, hydrogeology, and its ability to be screened from neighboring properties and public roads. The applicant has prepared a visual resource evaluation, which shows that the proposed project will be substantially screened due to existing vegetation and topography. Thank you. Word four, the project will be subject to such conditions on operation, design, and layout of structures and provision of buffer areas, as may be necessary to ensure compatibility with surrounding uses and to protect the natural, historic, and scenic resources of the town. The applicant will be required to have an onsite monitor during construction to ensure that there is no erosion from use of Melanie Way. Be it further resolved that pursuant to Section 108-9.4C1 of the zoning law, the planning board hereby waives the requirement of black-coated channeling fencing, since the fence will not be visible to the public. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grant site plan approval and special use permit approval to the project as shown on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrows. Approval by the attorney to the, two, approval by the attorney to the planning board of an agreement committing the owner of the telecommunications tower and its successors and interests to negotiate in good faith for shared use of said tower by other providers of telecommunications in the future in accordance with Section 101-6 of the Town Code. Three, approval by the town attorney of an access easement to the town, providing access for inspections and decommissioning. Such easement can be incorporated into the removal agreement required by Section 101-17 of the Town Code. Four, approval by the town attorney of the communications facilities removal agreement required by Section 101-17 of the Town Code. The removal agreement shall be executed by both the applicant and the landowner. Five, filing with the town clerk evidence of liability insurance in accordance with Section 101-20 of the Town Code. Six, approval by the planning board engineer and zoning administrator of the estimated cost of dismantling. Seven, revision of the site plan set as follows. A, label, let's see, label the type, manufacturer, and model number of the proposed tower as per 101-5 comma B4D. B, add a plan note about use of any easements required by conditions two, three, and four. C, revise plan sheet C-10, landing straddle protection to one. Provide clear legible text for all the notation on the left column of Plan Sheet C10, which provides a notation about the fact sheet, measures to take during encounters, and trap hazard protection. And two, revise the landing straddle mitigation measures, note number six, second bullet to specify, fine mesh quarter-inch square. D, revise Sheet C2 to include the following note. A monitor hired by the town shall be onsite to ensure that no grading or other disturbance other than utility trenching is undertaken on Melanie Way without approval of an erosion and sediment control permit. It shall be the applicant's responsibility to ensure that the monitor is onsite during all phases of construction. Failure to comply with this condition may result in revocation of the building permit. Eight, submission of $7,000 into an escrow account for the onsite monitor of Melanie Way. Nine, issuance of a town of Hyde Park erosion and sediment control permit for the utility trenching on Melanie Way. Ten, issuance of a construction access permit and a commercial access permit from the Duchess County Department of Public Works, known as DCDPW, or a letter from DCDPW indicating that no permit is needed for the project. Second, Ann Dexter?
Thank you, Stephanie. That was a mouthful. I agree. You did it beautifully. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Congratulations, Ms. Paponio and Mr. Olson. And I can't wait to say, to, to, when I drive on Quaker Lane to have better service again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure working with you guys.
It has been. Until the next time.
Thank you.
Bye.
I have to laugh after reading all of that, and Ann Dexter just says second.
I know. The next, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver. This is for Ferrara and Rosner located at 64 Garden. This is just really for a side deck and stairs, but this is still within the statewide area, scenic area statewide significant, sorry, and requires site plan review. And less recommended to have a waiver by Ms. Moss, and we have that recommendation. Any questions from my colleagues? I believe this resolution will be introduced by Ms. Dexter, so she has to speak now this time, too.
Yes, but nothing like what Ms. Wasser said to do. Townified Park Planning Board Resolution for Timothy and Samantha Rosner, Site Plan Waiver for Town Code Section 108-94C2, Resolution 2020-21. Whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Townified Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, September 18th, 2020, and per the request to the planning board dated October 14th, 2020.
Second, Chris Oliver?
Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Any nays or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I wanted to thank everyone again for this, and thank Victoria for stepping in at the last moment to host. Neil and Ann had internet issues at their house, so we will hope that that will be resolved shortly.
Quickly.
Quickly, rather than shortly. Quickly, 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 quickly. Good luck, and there being no other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Second, Diane DeNapoli.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.